Hi Erin, good evening.
Hi, good evening. How you doing?
Good, how's everyone doing so?
I'm fine myself.
Line up our notes. Thank you for joining today. On the chat, you can find our notes. Make sure to mark your attendance. Okay, typing works too. Thank you, Diora. Think this Thursday. No, we already had, okay, so office hours, you already had the office hours for. Let me see, this is the schedule. This hours and then there. Updates and then um. Um, open source group and. Okay, so I think we already had our office hours. The next one's gonna be November thirteen on the calendar. Uh, which is next week. Is anybody interested in, that's on the call, interested in participating or speaking at one of the office hours? We can come up with a topic. You can give a reaction, get off mic, or just put in the chat, yes or no?
Erin and I would, would want, love to speak about um the, our new initiative of. Starting the Linux. Conference across Africa. Hi, yes, you know, I didn't see Helen. Hope you're good, hope you can hear me too.
Hello everyone, how you doing? Hello.
Sorry, I keep cutting you, you're saying.
No, you're, you're good, you're saying hi to everybody. It's uh, it's, it's really nice um. Love everyone. Uh, let me post the meeting notes again. Got those that came in later. Uh, prints for the uh Linux meetup, open source group. In uh your area, did you wanna do that for the office hours, or did you wanna talk about that today? Or both?
Yeah, um, we're, we're thinking of using, talking about it on the office hours.
Okay. Okay, cool, so we'll have.
We don't really have any updates today. We have uh, so we, we have kind of like a working group. Or a special interest group, I should say. And we are doing some daily stand-ups on. And um, on this initiative, so. Hopefully, if, if that is accepted, we'd like to talk about our progress so far and. What we think, some of the things we think. We could, we can do to. Make this work and yeah, I mean, talk about. On that.
There'd be an update. Do you have an official name for the group?
Yes, so we settled on OSS Africa. Um, through the open source and security Africa. Yeah, so. We checked, sorry.
I'm typing in the chat like that?
Yes, so open source and security Africa.
Okay. Okay, so I'll let um. Operations now, and then we'll get that advertised, and it'll just be more of a, an update. Um, and then folks that are interested in helping. Uh, to come in and. Thank you, Erin.
So, we are thinking of, we, we actually haven't had our first meetup yet, say with. The community, but we already have a community. Um, I think Seth here has a community. That we've been participating in, and that is the Utopia community, so um. We're hoping on. Speaking to some of the, I would say executives, or the guys on that community to. Start uh, perhaps our first meetup hopefully in the next few weeks. We are thinking of having bi-weekly meetups and. Like I said earlier, we currently have at least three before myself, Seth, Erin. Doing daily stand-ups on what we think we can do to make this work. You, we are supposed to reach out for help, so I think this is our second time joining the call. On, on this very subject or topic. Yes, he, yeah, supposed to get to you. Someday then, so hopefully. Before, sorry, when, when is the um? The um.
Uh, November thirteenth.
The working, okay.
At twelve P M Eastern is the next office hours.
Alright, okay, so that'll be next week.
Yep.
Okay, so hopefully before then we get to Ghana. I speak to the, the folks on Utopia to join the office hours, yeah.
Yeah, and then what was the, the group called? I wonder if you wanna put it on the, on the chat, so I can add it to the notes, or add it to the notes?
So it's called Utopia. Seth, would you want to add to that? Yeah, in the chat.
Yeah, either in the chat or the notes, just so that we can have it, Utopia, okay? So you're working with them um.
So it's actually a community status that's started. And everything. Test in general. So we are hoping to start with our community and then if, as this grows, speak to other communities and then. Yeah. Try to kind of like, like, okay, go ahead please.
I know, pause it, uh, this is just to connect with them, start the group there, and then you start expanding out to other communities, if I understood.
Yes, that's, that's what we intend on doing.
Nice, and then when's your official next meetup? For your first, if you've had it already, thank you.
Next, so that should be two weeks from now. That was decided this morning, actually, so two weeks from now, so. That should be. Do you give me a second? So today is the fourth, hopefully by eighteenth, on the eighteenth. Right?
And that would be with Coltopia, or just uh yourselves?
So, yeah, we currently have the Cortopia guys on board, and the community on board. Um, we are hoping to advertise and get more people to join our first meetup, but. For now, we can, we are setting all the folks from Utopia. And would be glad if, if you could join us. During that, or is anyone on the call here to join? That'd be fine.
Yeah, and I think we have our next call on the eighteenth, so I'm assuming this is gonna be before the next bear working group.
On the eighteenth, then there might be a conflict there, but ours is usually. Alright, so I think we need to uh discuss. Find a time that would work for everyone, but. Yeah, the, this was to have it in two weeks from now. But hopefully it does not conflict with our, it should be in the evening probably, so.
Yeah, but I would recommend.
Yeah, sorry, go ahead.
You're good, uh, we use a doodle poll. It's called, uh, just, you can search online, and then you can send that out to um. The members, you find time and it lets you set up like a poll. So you can find time for everybody, instead of going back and forth via email, you can um. Create a group poll and say, okay, what time, you know, between these dates? Uh, and then you just choose the one that has, that fits the best.
Oh, sounds good. Thank you.
Welcome.
Yes, that's it for me. I don't know if Sid would want to, or Iran would have, want to see anything about this.
And then if anything, stuff you can type um. Uh, I would recommend, if you're trying to get folks also from Open Ss staff to join the call, send that out to uh general. And then I'll have um operations let folks know that the next office hours um. Your group is gonna go ahead and, and give like. Uh, kind of an overview and an update on the group, so. Um, to structure out, I'm gonna put in the chat, but for the office hours. You know, you take it how, how you want, but I think high level is like, what is the group? Um, what is the goal of the group? Like what are you trying to accomplish? Um, ah. What is the group? What is the group? Yeah, um. Where are you currently? Me at? Are you working on? Challenges that the community can help you with? With, and then any other? Information.
Sorry, are you, sorry, um, you, are you entering this spoken in the chat?
Yeah, yeah. So just so you can, if you're trying to figure like what to share, I think these would be the top um. Focus areas, and then you can go ahead and, you know, tweak it as is. But this would help you get folks onboard, if they know what the cause is, and what you're trying to do, what you're trying to accomplish.
We currently are what we are working on. Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. Anything else on, on this topic?
No, that'll be all, um, there's something that I think has been overlooked, I, I. Not, not, not fully unrelated, it has to do with the tip of the month. I keep bringing, bringing this up, and then I vanish. Believe the answer, um, I wanted to ask if there's finally some way being done that. By anyone, yeah?
Uh, no, I. I know a few calls ago, I said I was gonna pick it up, and then I just been overwhelmed with everything else um, that. Marcella should be back for the next call. Uh, we'll regroup to see, maybe it's just something we take uh during one of the bear working group calls and just hash out together. And that way we can just send it to marketing, because all it is is just marketing. Uh, to help drive more, more audience and folks.
Okay. And I, 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 I realized. I had read a few promises on working on that and I was of, yeah. And I couldn't pick up, so maybe. We can start somewhere on that. Okay, but we did have a, uh. We did have some timelines that. On when every tip of the month would go like, some ideas on. Maybe we can look at that again and. Try, yes.
Yeah, we'll definitely have to regroup on, on that and see. Um, if we can, if we plan on doing it, what we're gonna do. And then um. Figure out next steps, um, because I know this year we've been mostly working on making sure that we had speakers and things for the office hours. And then for next year as well, so just put this into the twenty twenty-six bucket. Twenty-six would be the tip of the month, um. And then part of the open source group, open source and security Africa would be the speaking engagements.
Okay.
But what was this? So that would be stuff we talk about, um. Maybe in, aren't on November eighteenth would be our, our roadmap.
Yeah. Sorry, I didn't get what you said on the doodle poll. What, what is it exactly and, and? What can we use it for?
So since you have multiple people and you're trying to figure out a date, a date and time for their group to meet. Um, everyone's schedule is different, right? So, share my screen real quick. And I'm only gonna share this. It has to show, okay. Screen three. Share. Okay, uh, just confirming you can see my screen?
Yes, yeah.
And this is, okay. So here you can be like, what's your occasion? So also this Africa. You set your time, right? So I want sixty minutes, ninety minutes, whatever it is that you want. You create a doodle, like click the button. Um, and then here, you can go, you said November eighteen. So you can be like, okay, so this is on Eastern time zone, so you know that eleven A M is the bear working group, so you can be like. Um, seven to E M. Nine to eight, and you start selecting different options. Okay. Um, and then you go ahead and. Whatever you select it, you go to, you move to the next screen, which is sign up and share. Um, I don't wanna put my email, because this is uh, shared on YouTube, but. You put your email, the next page, it's gonna create it and give you a link, and then in that link, you'll go ahead and send that out, and then as a user. So if you send it to me, I'm gonna see the list of dates that you selected, right? And then I'm gonna be able to say this works for me, or this doesn't work for me. Um, and then. Yeah, and then at the end of it, um, you'd be able to, let it stop sharing my screen. At the end of it, you'll, you'll be able to see which one people select more. So that it will help you coordinate, instead of sending an email out to everybody and then going back and forth in email, you can send that out. Um, and have people select the date, time that works for them. And they can select more than one. You're very welcome.
Alright.
You can use that to coordinate, um. Any other questions on Doodle poll?
Uh, that, that'll be all for now. Thank you.
Uh, the, you're welcome. The other topic I had is we need to do an update for the tag, but since we just did it for. Um, the open S S S, uh. Yearly update, I'll go ahead and take that action and send it out. We have our tag call in November, I think it's eleventh. Next Tuesday, yeah. Yeah, as far as that, that's really all I had right now for the group. Um, any other topics or areas of conversation? I know Dioro just jumped off, I wanted to see if there was any updates on the logs.
Well, just, just so that um. I, I know um. Said and Iran are. Pretty much new to the working group on the office, what are some expectations for the office hours? On the.
Um, expectations for the office hours?
Yeah, so um. You know, how, how do you usually do about the office hours and? And.
Um, if you want, you could create, let's say, a PowerPoint deck. With each slide kind of answers the questions. Um, and then you walk through it uh with the group. Um, I would recommend for better visibility and such, you know, be able to have cameras on, the audio. Get somewhere where your uh audio camera and, you know, Wi-Fi is a little bit better. And then, if not, it's technology, it's not a big deal, you can be off camera. Um, but really, it would be, you don't have to do it now.
I love this.
I love camera.
Anyway, right.
But you, you can start it off where, if you can, wanna do a PowerPoint presentation, or like a slideshow presentation, you can. If you just wanna speak on the topics, you can. It's kinda like your hour to. Share and advertise like what you're doing and what you're working on. Um, we'll try to drive as many participants as possible to that, and then they're gonna come in, ask questions, or provide feedback. Give you information that should help you uh move this along. And then you can even be like, you know, that's why one of the questions is like, what challenge is your current facing? You can bring that and then ask the group, and we can help you uh either brainstorm that, or maybe somebody has some experience in doing that. Um, it would be cool for, what is the group? Maybe you show a picture. Um, if you're on off camera, like, and if you do a slideshow deck, you have a picture of the members. Um, so, I'm at this here picture of members. Who to contact. And things like that, I just updated the notes. Um, that way, if somebody is watching the YouTube video later, and they're like, oh, this is really nice. Um, I wanna, I wanna participate, they know how to contact you, so if you can. Uh, create like a free email address that you can direct people to, don't share yours, but maybe you have an email address for that particular group. Hey, Yoma.
Hey, Lita.
Yeah, so if you can have like an email address for that particular group, when you're on the office hours, you're like, okay, you can contact us through. Info at, you know. Open Source Africa gmail dot com, or Peloton, Proton Mail, whatever it is. That you create, um, and that can be the email address for the group, so it doesn't go to one of your specific mailbox, but it's like a mailbox the group shares. Um, that way you can have like an intention and goal for this office hours, because even if people don't, you'll, you'll still have their recording on YouTube. That you can um. Take and start advertising into your different community groups.
Okay.
They can be like, hey, you wanna learn about this? Here's a, a, a video that we recently did, talking about the group.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, so, with a lot of good things. And, yeah, I don't know.
Yeah, as a group, just think about what you wanna share next week. Um. And then if you do wanna move it out to the twentieth. Um, that way you can do it after you meet on the eighteenth. Let me know so I can coordinate that with uh operations. I don't know if that might be a better option right now, it's just to move it to the, to the twentieth.
Yeah, um, so, yeah, we'll, we'll talk about that, we'll discuss that and. Get back to you on that, uh.
Okay.
Hello.
Sounds good. Any other question?
We really appreciate your, your guidance on this.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Yes.
I look forward to seeing it, girl, um. I, I do have to go for a meeting, what happened?
Yeah, you might be giving a. Uh, a talk. Uh, a talk at our conference a year or two years from now.
A year is too far.
Hopefully it grows faster than that, but yeah, for now.
You'll be surprised how quickly I flies. But awesome, if you have any more questions or anything, feel free to ping me on Slack. Um, I do have to drop for another call. But um, and then let me know before the end of the week if you wanna move it to the twentieth.
So, thank you. There the rest of your thing. What's, what's the time where you are now?
Uh, it's eleven A M. I'm on the East Coast. Enjoy your evening, everyone.
Yeah, bye.